And I'll just remind you, this is just a forum, it's not a debate. And it's ultimately so that these fine folks watching online and that our president here this evening can get to know you a little bit better. So, question number one, if you could, just tell us why you are running for city council?
As I stated before, my current member is now running again, you know, I enjoy being a voice for the citizens of Bellmead and doing my part to the community. I'll continue to do that.
Alright, so, I am active through the army. I have decided that as I'm on my last year in retiring, that I wanted to do more in my personal community. So, as a member, I started out as a member on the N E D C. And as I've been there roughly eight months now, seven months now, I see where the city, I see more of the inner workings of the city. I feel that we need to work towards the future with the Bellmead, you know, the future of Bellmead, 2030, 2040. And we need to be able to lay plans out, and we need a council member there that has strategic capabilities, that can look forward and plan out and be able to help the city stack projects, like doing infrastructure, working on the sewage lines, water lines, then coming in on the next project right behind it, the roads, and then being able to balance that within the budget or available assets. That capability needs to be there to support the city and drive it to the next level. A lot of things that we're doing right now, we're doing things in the city where we're patching and putting damage on, and we're doing a few things that we can afford to do now. But if we do not put the future into the plan where we can develop it farther, where when we finish that project, we don't have to come back five years later if something grows and make it bigger, that's where the strategic parts got to come in. You gotta be able to see forward that ten, fifteen, twenty years of where you want Bellmead to look like, and be able to fix those things as you go, so that those problems will come back around.
Thank you. Mr. Bainbridge, we want to just keep the microphone, we'll go to the second question. And I think you might have had some of these thoughts already, but the question specifically is, what do you consider to be important milestones for the future development of the city of Bellmead?
I think all milestones that the city selects are important. The reason why I think this is because milestones are key events that have to happen, are trigger points that have to happen before the next event. Funding runs out, it changes fiscal year, there's grants that have time limits on them, there's other plans that the city does to help pay for things that have time limits on them. And if you don't have milestones set in place and hit those milestones, some of them are like on the B E D C. We were able to fund and put in two water cougars, and that was a milestone for us on the B E D C. And so by this summer, the residents that were complaining that, you know, they had to wait till after dark, the tap water was hot in the middle of the day at a hundred degree weather, hopefully this year we'll find out that's a hundred percent fixed.
Mr. Cleveland, I'll read the question again. What do you consider to be important milestones for the future development of the city of Bellmead?
Well, I think moving forward, I believe that's going to bring more people, more businesses, you know, help reverse the deal a lot.
Alright, Mr. Cleveland, we're gonna keep the microphone with you. And I think you might have answered this one too. A lot of these kind of crossover, obviously they're very important. But specifically, the third question is, Bellmead has very aging infrastructure. How do you propose to address this issue?
We've already started, you know, with defense, we've been having, you know, different ways of cracking revenue. And we've got a great staff, but as of right now, there's quite progress getting new equipment to take care of these issues that's been ongoing, you know, in the past with that, none of the mandated equipment, you know, which makes it hard to do your job. So, we'll get these events and programs in place, you know, bringing revenue to tackle those problems.
Excellent. Mr. Bainbridge?
First, I have to say, I think the city council needs to come together and develop a working group. Like, I'm just gonna say it once a quarter. This working group would involve these big projects, some minor projects, and then they could work on things like clearing ditches, long concord is one of those quick fixes. But then when you start talking about the failing infrastructure or the infrastructure being at max capacity, the city has done a great job on working like the new sewer line, getting the cost down, getting it within budget. The city staff has done an amazing job there from a person who lives in Crease, Oregon, seeing it from the outside. I see a lot of tax dollars at work and being used correctly, but, kind of like what I said earlier, that, you know, with these planning meetings, if we're planning to fix the ditches along concord, it's more than just cleaning them out, it's what is it gonna take to sustain them? What is routine maintenance gonna look like? What is, and those plans can go forward to help support what the city's already starting to build.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll leave the microphone with you, Mr. Bainbridge. Question number four. What are your thoughts on employee compensation? And there's a little explanation here. Per capita, Bellmead is one of the busiest cities in regards to police, fire, public works, calls, et cetera. And yet the pay scale consistently ranks as one of the lowest in all of the peer cities surrounding Bellmead and across the state. So again, what are your thoughts on employee compensation, knowing that?
I have personally not been on the city council and not been involved with this, but I would start to say that this is an issue that would need to be addressed sooner rather than later. We can, you know, if I was on the city council, we could fix the issue with a step planning process. And what I mean by that is we can start from the lowest worker and then go up the pay scale to the top of the list, go through and compare that to cities around us and comparable cities in budget, the number of citizens that are in that, number of taxpaying citizens, you know, properties, and give a fair value of what it's for. And I do believe that all of our first responders, all of our city employees, workers, waterworks, et cetera, should get a fair steady pay for a fair steady work. And that they should be able to have compensation that is equal to what they're doing. But with that said, it has to be done within budget. Because we do live in a small community, we comparatively, we have to stay within budget. And like we spoke about earlier, is if we're working on one of the key issues, it's infrastructure. That is not a cheap job, that is a big ticket, high dollar item. So, you're gonna, we're gonna have to look at where we can cut costs and where we can adjust funds. And then from there, what other assets are available to be able to make payable and be able to bring it up. So, this may take one, two, three, four years to get it up to pay. But I think if the employees can see that you're trying, I think that they will be willing to stay because they're best in the city that they work in.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cleveland, I'll let him pass the mic to you, I'll read the question again. What are your thoughts on employee compensation? Knowing that per capita, Bellmead is one of the busiest cities in regards to police, fire, public works, calls, et cetera, and yet the pay scale consistently raises as one of the lowest of all of our peer cities?
I agree with Mr. Bainbridge, you know, we've already started the process, you know, bringing those, those pay rates up, you know, already, and we've gotta continue to move forward on that, you know, kind of on our work. You only get as good as what you're paying, you know, wait until you get the best. And we've got some great officers, again, since we've started our programs. You know, hopefully we continue to grow that revenue to keep, continue to increase their pay.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland. I think that Ms. Neal has arrived, is that Ms. Neal I see? We're glad you're here, Mr. Neil, if you want to join us. We still have a few questions that we're going through from the questions that were previously provided. If you would like to just grab a seat right there and the microphone, Mr. Cleveland has, he can pass to you. And we'll give you just a moment if you want to introduce yourself to those present online, and then I'll proceed with the question.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. I was given a long time tonight, I do apologize for my tardiness. My name is Chad Smith Neal, and I am seeking reelection for city council, precinct four. In conjunction with the four, the four years I spent in college, I've been a resident of Bellmead for about ten years. There's been a bit of, a few rumors about my residency, but I like to go anywhere in the book. I am a resident of Bellmead, I do live in Bellmead, registered about here. I just live in a multi-international home, there's nothing wrong with that. I have two beautiful sons, and I'm also a business owner in precinct four. I've been a caring community servant, I serve in the community, even part of to join the council in 2020. And my career is in early education, and I do, I do have a high focus on the, on our youth.
Thank you, ma'am. The question that we are on is number four. What are your thoughts on employee compensation on city employees? And keeping in mind that per capita, Bellmead is one of the busiest cities in regards to police, fire, and public works, calls, and yet the pay scale consistently raises as one of the lowest of all peer cities. So again, the question being, what are your thoughts on employee compensation?
Yes, sir, so, I personally believe that we're, Bellmead is a lot of top heavy. There are a lot of city employees that pay between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Yet our first responders and our employees that are on the front line are not being paid fairly. Not only are they not getting paid what they need to be paid, but they're also overworked. When they're the ones that, you know, primarily are out in the trenches doing the hard work for the city, but Bellmead hasn't been a living business since 2015. So, I, I do think that you should put more value into our employees and look into increasing their pay. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we'll move to the next question, we'll start with Mr. Bainbridge. Sir, what makes you stand out from the other candidate or candidates in your precinct?
I believe I'm the best person for this job because I'm invested in Bellmead and the citizens of Bellmead. I love this town, this is my home. And we all want to improve our homes, it's just I'm fixing to make mine a few acres bigger of everything if I get away. I believe the citizens want a strong leader that will hear their voice, that will be transparent about what they're doing and why they're doing it. They want someone that they can call or email and get an answer or possibly get an issue fixed. I want to be part of growing the future of Bellmead and pushing it forward into 2030, 2040. I have boys here that live here that have gone to high school and grown, you know, graduated and moved on up, you know, out into civilian life. And when I'm, when I'm a hundred percent retired, I want, I want their vision to be in place. And I want to be the driving force that puts it there. While working to achieve all of the Bellmead's vision for the future, I've started this process a year ago. I am active through the army. I had to go all through my chains of command, I had three of them. I had to get all of my commander's recommendations, and I had to go before the secretary of the army to get approval to be here. So, I want, I want to be a council member and I want to be precinct four's council member. I have strategic capabilities, I've led troops in multiple operations. I've done everything from things with my kids, their schools, being able to, you know, come up and volunteer time to teach them land nav and things, and having the NAR, T C, how to use orienteering, which is maneuvering by stars. Then I've moved into the B E D C, where I've really got to see the inner workings, as I've developed more time to be able to be at home. And I think that I have the capabilities and what we need to do. And I can see the vision, and I hear what the people are wanting that I'm talking to, and I can see what 2030 and 2040 still look like.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Neal, question again, what makes you stand out from the other candidate or candidates in your precinct?
I am obviously one of the youngest members on the council. I feel as though I can relate to a large population in the city of Bellmead, specifically in precinct four. I thoroughly understand the city government. Although this is my first two years on the council, I've gone through two budgets, the process of the budgets, the overall of the budgets. I study each and each month, and I am always sure to make a vote that's for the community and for the people, not for myself's benefit and not for a small select few of individuals. I, I be sure to make the decisions that are going to collectively benefit the community as a whole. Overall, I am a community servant. Ever since I was a child, I've always been involved in the community and doing things that I don't need any type of benefit or more for it. So, I know this is a non paid position, and I have multiple other things going on, but I, I love giving back to the community of Bellmead.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Mr. Cleveland, again, what makes you stand out from any other candidate in precinct four? Do you have a candidate, do you have an opposition? I don't think so. So, why should I reelect you? How about that?
Well, I'm an open book, I'm willing to get out there and do the work necessary, you know, the community, you know. I've already put in a lot of sweat and a lot of blood here in there in the recent event we had, the community cleanup, you know. So, I'm willing to do what's needed. And there's been a few that felt they've forgotten, but then that community over the years, and they've recently reached out, and I have to say with the property staff, they could come to our association now that they know they have a voice out there.
Thank you, I'll let you keep the microphone. This will be the last of the pre-presented questions. What is one major issue you wish to work on if you are reelected?
I'd like to work on something for the kids in the community, you know, to give them an opportunity to, instead of running the streets, have somewhere to go and, you know, enjoy.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Neal, same question to you. One major issue you wish to work on if you are reelected?
I definitely have to agree. Just developing something that can get our youth involved and get them something to do. I believe it will help to lower our crime rate, I believe that it will bring just a lot of positivity with the Bellmead. I know we have discussed some things that we could do before that I'm really excited about, such as, you know, possibly building a recreation center, and I'm really excited about, excited about that. So, being an operator, isn't early education, that would be one of the top things that I feel like is an issue that I will push for, for in developing one.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Bainbridge, if elected, what is one major issue you would wish to work on?
I would have to say the infrastructure, all of it. Sewer streaks, drainage, watershed, recreational areas. Part of that is already in motion with the new sewer system. I think we should work with the Bayou High School and bring the government students in and have not a junior council kind of thing. I think we should be able to assign one of the students to each of the board members and council members, and then they can get a young view of where we need to go, what we need to do. And I think even some of those projects, like on the boards, like the B E D C or the parks, they could plan for any spaces. You could give them a small budget over a four-year while they're in school, and then they could plan out, you know, like one of the parks, the walkway, what plants can go in, what they can afford within that small, you know, five, ten thousand dollar budget. Great ideas come from all kinds of places, and I think the young citizens are extremely bright. I think our students and stuff would give us an insight that maybe some of us older generation and the ones that are older than me don't see. And lastly, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. And I'd like to say that if anybody has anything they want to talk to me about or any questions or meeting, I'll make myself available out front, and we can talk about anything or any questions you have.
Thank you all. I'll remind the audience, both listening online and watching, and those present, if you want to submit questions, please do so online or over here at the table to your left. We have one question from Glenn DePulter that has been submitted. Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate you being here and asking a question. So this will be asked to all of you, Mr. Bainbridge, you keep the mic, come back down this way. But the question is, what do the candidates think they can do better for Bellmead?
If I'm elected, I think that I, I would bring in a different view. Being, you know, being involved with the schools in my job, I'm involved with a lot of drug demand reduction and red ribbon events. You know, and I, I see a lot of youth and what they want to achieve. And I think by some of those ideas being brought in and broadening out the knowledge span and helping our youth and in helping ourselves with their views, I think that would help, help move us forward.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Neal, question is, what do the candidates think they can do better for Bellmead?
I believe I could add to our community engagement. We have a lot of things going on within the community of Bell, of Bellmead that work towards getting our, our citizens out and involved, but I think that we could do more. And since I am service oriented, I believe that I could, I could really put my mind to it so that I could get with people in the department and get more events going on, not even directly related to the youth, but just to citizens in general, just to get them to come out for various reasons, educational reasons, just, you know, just to get, just to get them out and get them involved and get them active and to have it, to bring it more so outside of social media and create real life events where we could learn, we could give back, volunteer, and just get everybody involved. That's what I believe I could bring to the table.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Mr. Cleveland?
I'm not gonna say that there's one thing I can do better than any one of these up here with me tonight, because we all bring our own to the table. But I will say I can get out there and try to be an example, you know, instead of just another face, you know, they see, second to ever.
Excellent. Thank you all. Any other online questions? Speak now, whoever holds your peace in the audience. Alright, then I'm gonna ask a question. So we'll, we'll keep this, this might be the last question. Keep the microphone with you, Mr. Cleveland, but mine is in regards to economic development. How do you propose you will keep businesses and residents here? We've seen a lot of growth, and then as well as encourage others to help businesses and homeowners to come into the city? How would you encourage that and keep that rate up going that we've seen here in this, in this fine city with our growth?
Oh, one thing is to continue, you know, where we're already putting places, you know, as far as to be able to clean up, you know, to continue to show improvements in the roads, as well as the infrastructure. That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
I believe we, in order to keep the economic development going, we should continue to focus on improving our infrastructure, as well as keeping our taxes affordable, although a lot of businesses do seek to come to Bellmead because of our tax rights. And like Councilman, Councilman Cleveland said, continue to do things like ours, to be cleaning up and keep our, keep Bellmead fresh, keep it up to date, keep it exciting, fun, and the businesses will come, and those are the people who want to stay.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Bainbridge?
I think with, you know, we've already talked about infrastructure and stuff, with that, part of the development of the city is the economic growth. So, with that economic growth and would bring more funds in, keeping businesses in place, thriving communities, I think that as we develop and grow the infrastructure, that'll also grow the capability to add more homes, more businesses, more shopping areas, and then it kind of takes on a life of its own. And I see that the city's already got a good campaign online. They're, you know, they're advertising Bellmead, they're pushing forward, they're reaching out to businesses, and they're doing the things that they need to do. We just need to be able to push it to the next step that where we can find that breaking point where the funds and stuff will be easier to do repairs and make larger steps.
Excellent. I don't see any additional questions have been submitted, but we have cruised along. You guys have been very careful to watch your time. I think it would be helpful maybe to those watching in the audience, if you could maybe summarize in less than sixty seconds, why you should be elected to this office? And so we'll start with you, sir.
I think the real reason I should be elected is to drive, I'm, like I said earlier, I'm a thirty-one year veteran. I, and I have, you know, I can, I can tell you this, the, the army has taught me a lot, has gave me a lot of capability, a lot of knowledge, a lot of leadership skills, capabilities, skills. And like Ms. Neal said, you know, I'd be out there, and, you know, and like, I go out to the parks, I help clean up things, I do roadside cleanups. My boys, when they're in, boy scouts, we, you know, take out, you know, areas, highway pickup, things like that. I, I can see that we have capabilities and that we have assets that we're not reaching yet to help us grow. And with, well, if, you know, I'm elected, I would say that I would be able to move forward to that next step.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Neal?
I'll just leave everyone with this. Know that if I am reelected, my vote will be for the development of the city of Bellmead. Like I said before, not for, started to know.
Um, like I said before, not for certain amount of individuals, um, not for a certain group of people, but I will always do what's right for the city as a whole, and I think that my primary focus.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cleveland?
Re-elected, uh, my goal ultimately is for Bellmead to be a place people can be proud to call home, my kids as well, you know, and recommend for their friends and family to come and work their out and see what their city.
Excellent. I want to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to be present this evening. I've got a few additional announcements, uh, but again, thank you, Mr. Cleveland, uh, Ms. Neal and Mr. Baybridge for taking the time, and I know that you guys will probably be available if there's some additional questions, maybe afterwards for a few minutes. So get out your, uh, phones, your day planners, whatever it might be. I've got some important dates to share with you folks, and, uh, most importantly, it's gonna be Election Day. Election Day is May the seventh, Election Day, May the seventh. You can vote for twelve hours that day. There's no excuses, seven AM to seven PM. You can vote right here at the Civic Center. In addition to that, there is early voting. That is from April twenty-fifth all the way through May third. April twenty-fifth all the way through May third. And there are multiple places that you can vote. You can vote at the McLean County Administration Office downtown. You can vote at the Robinson Community Center, the Waco Multi-Purpose Community Center, the West Waco Library, and the Hewitt City Hall and Library. All of this information can be found online and available. You can look at Facebook, you can go to bellmead.com, there is an election tab. So there is no reason whether you are at home here or going to and from work or sporting events, track meets, that's the, the season we're in at my house right now, et cetera, you should be able to find a time or place to get out and go for these fine candidates. We greatly appreciate, again, their time and their energy, their efforts in stepping out in the public spotlight to run. That is greatly, greatly appreciated, and it's good for our city. In addition to that, something very specific that I want you guys to perhaps maybe ask questions about afterwards if you are interested in doing so, but also note, uh, there is a special election coming up. Specifically, that is for the street maintenance sales tax. We heard a lot about infrastructure, and so that is going to be something very important for the citizens to consider and vote on. I've got some information here that I'm gonna read to you, so please bear with me, and of course, listen very carefully, as my mother, the teacher, reminds me at all times to do. The city of Bellmead City Council has prioritized investing in the city's infrastructure through the improvement, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of our streets here in Bellmead. The current street maintenance tax was previously authorized in the years of two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen, and two thousand and eighteen, so it's been quite some time ago. The tax code requires the voters reauthorize this tax every four years. The street maintenance sales tax is paid by a consumer, both resident and non-residents, on taxable sales from local businesses. For example, you've got Home Depot here, HDB, Sam's, and so on. And this is taxable online purchases when a business has its location, and taxes also applies. If approved, this is important, folks, if approved, believe it or not, taxes would not increase, only continue. Again, I will say that, if approved, taxes would not increase, only continue. So please keep that in mind for the street maintenance sales tax. Now, so we do have city council members present. Uh, the city has posted a notice of a possible quorum at the city hall and the Civic Center as well to comply with state law regulations. And again, candidates are encouraged to stay, make some meaningful answers questions with the citizens that are taking the time to be here this evening. Again, I would thank all three of you for being present. Uh, again, I encourage you guys to stay as long as you have, and please tell your friends to do the same. And please be sure to thank the city and the city staff for making this event happen. Uh, it takes a lot of time to prepare, et cetera, get this room ready, be online, all of those things to make a event like this happen. We've got some snacks in the back, some beverages as well, and thank you again all for being present this evening.